Regular zoning board meeting of the Board of Adjustment for the Township of Belleville for October 3, 2024 will come to order. Clerk Colerole.
Anguina.
Here.
Giudano. Mafucci.
Here.
Pedalino.
Here.
Rinaldi. Soriano.
Here.
Vellana. Bennett. Delgertia.
Here. Everyone please rise and pledge their allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Secretary, have notice of this meeting been given in accordance to the Sunshine Law?
The certification of this meeting has been advertised in accordance to the Sunshine Law.
Okay. Has everyone looked at the minutes? We have minutes for two months here for July and September. Okay? We'll be voting on these separately because some of the members were for one and some of the members were here at the other. Okay? So, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for July?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Okay. Let me make sure we know everybody right here. People who were not at that meeting, let's get that straight. Oh, no, they're not there. Or they were there for that meeting but not for the minutes for July, were Mr. Pedalino, and that was it?
That's it.
That's Mr. Pedalino. Okay, Clerk Colerole.
Anguina.
Here.
Mafucci.
Yes.
Soriano.
Yes.
Vellana.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Delgertia.
Here. Yes. I'm sorry. Now, the minutes for September 5, 2024, I was not here, Mr. Vellana was not here, and Mr. Mafucci were not here. So, anyone want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Well, the motion should be made by somebody that was here for that.
Yeah, I was here.
You weren't.
I made a motion for last month.
Oh, you made the motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Pedalino made the motion, seconded by Ms. Bennett. Clerk Colerole.
Yes. Yes.
Anguina.
Yes.
Pedalino.
Yes.
Soriano.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
That's it? Okay. Applications for adjournment, I have two applications for adjournments. And on the agenda, those are the last two cases on the agenda. ZB 2024-06, Brian and Mercureo Gualteri, it looks like, 7173 Newark Avenue. The letter is from the law firm of Gassione and Pomaco, signed by Mr. Palmieri. Dear Ms. Ciccarelli, I am writing to respectfully request an adjournment with regard to the above-captured matter. We are requesting that the application for Brian and Mercureo Gualteri scheduled to be heard at the October 3, 2024, meeting of the Belleville Zoning Board of Adjustment be adjourned until the November 7, 2024, a regular meeting without further notice or appearance on the part of the applicant. In consideration of this adjournment request, the applicant agrees to suspend any and all applicable time limits for municipal action for duration of the adjournment. Thank you in advance for your time and assistance and connection with this request. So, anybody who's here for that case, 7173 Newark Avenue, there'll be no further notices either in the mail or in the newspaper, and it is adjourned, and we will be heard here on November 7, 2024. Second case. This is also to Ms. Ciccarelli. This is application ZB 2024-09, Transform Lease OPCO LLC, 371 to 411 Main Street. That, as you are aware, this office represents the applicant Transform Lease OPCO LLC Incorporated on the above-referenced application schedule for a hearing on October 3, 2024 before the Belleville Zoning Board. The applicant confirmed that his request for the application fee and escrow deposit to be delivered prior to the hearing has not yet occurred. We respectfully request that the matter be carried without the need for further notice to the November 7, 2024, meeting of the Belleville Zoning Board of Adjustment. A representative of the applicant will appear at the hearing on October 3 to confirm the adjournment and to answer any questions. This correspondence will also serve to confirm the application has been deemed complete as no formal correspondence or other notification or saying has been forthcoming with the deadline per the Municipal Land Use Law, having passed on September 27. The deadline having passed on September 27, 2024. Thank you for your courtesy. Michael Boner, it looks like, Esquire, signed it. Is there a representative of this organization here?
I'm a representative. My name is John Baronello.
All right. Has the escrows been settled yet?
I am unaware if they have been one way or another.
Yes, no? Ms. Bennet, Ms. Ciccarelli? No, nothing yet? Okay. Well, it would be nice if this is all done by next month.
I will let the--
Because otherwise, we'll just dismiss it.
I will certainly let the applicant out, and I will quote the board chairman on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay.
What's the number? Number seven.
Yes. Oh, yeah, anybody who's in the audience for, this is actually the old Kmart property, to make it simple for everybody. And that is being adjourned to next month as long as the fees are put in. Otherwise, next month will be adjourned. Permanently, will be dismissed. Okay? So, there'll be no further notices either in the newspaper or in the mail for the application.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Okay. First case on the agenda is ZB 2024-05, Juliet Rose Enterprises LLC, 98 Little Street, Block 9801, Lot 15. The applicant is seeking to construct a three-story residential apartment building, a total of 12 dwelling units consisting of 10 one-bedrooms and 2 two-bedrooms. Who is the attorney?
Counselor's name is Robert Gassione, I represent the applicant.
Oh, Mr. Gassione, you're back. Okay. Haven't seen you for a while.
Correct. I am the governor, have been held on this board for a number of months.
Okay. So, now we got you back to come before us.
You got me back. I didn't hear the last thing you said.
It says, now you have, we have you back before us.
Yes, my pleasure to be here.
It's nice to have you back. You may proceed.
Okay.
Before we start, I would like to have our professionals swear their names.
Fine. If you'd like to raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application and the second application on this evening, do you swear the name? Testimony you may give.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Counselor's name is Robert Gassione, the firm is Gassione and Pomaco. I represent Juliet Rose Enterprises LLC, the owner of 98 Little Street. My clients, as pointed out by the chairman, are requesting for the Maryland final site plan approval and bulk use variance relief. In order to build an apartment building, they are seeking approval to build a three-story, 12-unit dwelling. They are proposing 10 one-bedrooms and 2 two-bedrooms. The property is located in an RV zone, and therefore multifamily use is prohibited. Therefore, we need a D for use variance. There are also a number of bulk variance being sought. The witnesses you'll hear from are Peter Saad of Juliet Rose, Ericoff the Site Engineer. I want to point out, Ericoff has made a change to the plans very, very recently, which he will review, changing the parking. It was not submitted because it was done at the last minute. The next witness you'll hear from is Harry Zawada, the architect, and the final witness will be George Williams, the planner. I'd like to call my first witness, if that's okay.
Yes, Chair.
Do you have a similar, we're going on notice.
Okay.
Yes, you might listen. No, even Soriano had a question?
No, no problem.
Okay. I'd call Mr. Saad.
Sir, if you could come up, just raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application. Do you swear the testimony or about to give some of the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Peter Saad, S-A-A-D.
S-A-A?
D.
Thank you.
Mr. Saad, what is your business address?
54 Brookside Avenue, Livingston, New Jersey.
And what is your occupation?
I'm a licensed attorney, and I also engage in real estate investment development.
Are you the owner of the property in question at 98 Little Street?
Yes, I'm one of the members--
Of the LLC?
Of the LLC that owned that property.
And for how long has that LLC owned the property?
We acquired that property in February of 2023.
And what is all the property at the present time?
At the present time, the property consists of a dilapidated two-family dwelling and a large side yard and driveway.
And if this application were to be approved, would you demolish that existing structure?
Yes, we would.
And generally, would you tell the board what it is you're seeking approval to do at this site?
We're seeking to construct a 12-unit, three-story building with ground floor parking at the site. It'll be a Class A multifamily dwelling.
And can you review with the board the thinking of you and the other members of the LLC with regard to why you are seeking the approval for the 12-unit at this location?
Yes, we're both Essex County lifelong residents, and we were looking for an opportunity to improve the character of the community. We noted that the area east of Washington Avenue, which is called the Valley Area, is an area that hasn't had much development and is, in our opinion, in need of some development. We found this property, which, as I indicated, is a dilapidated two-family. At the time when we acquired it, it was occupied by what I'll characterize as potentially unsavory individuals. The side yard had been used, for lack of a better term, as a junkyard. We acquired the property, were able to remove all of the occupants that were causing problems in the neighborhood, were able to clean up the side yard and remove all the junk that was there. We actually received praise from the Belleville Department of Public Works because it had been an issue for them that they had continued, continuously been citing this location for various violations and maintenance issues. They thanked me for coming in and cleaning it all up and spending their money to do so. So, we identified it as a site that would be a great opportunity to help improve the Belleville community.
Now, if this application were to be approved, would you retain or the entity retain ownership of this building?
Yes, we are in the business of owning and operating real estate ourselves. We don't sell them for a quick buck, and we own--
Mr. Gassione, that's accurate.
Pardon?
That's accurate. It makes no difference. You don't have to do that. He can say that here, and you don't have to do it.
I understand that, but--
All right, so, I don't think that's part of any testimony. We're only testimony about the case.
It's not part of the proof, but it's a statement that I think is important--
I don't think it's important at all.
Well, we disagree. If I present my case, are you?
Also, the gentleman, I'm going to tell you something else. The gentleman made a big statement about he wants to help the community. He don't live in the community. He doesn't live in the community.
Can I present my case, or are you going to interfere?
Well, no. If you're going to present the case with innuendos that are not correct, I don't think that's right.
There wasn't a thing that was said that was incorrect.
He is not a part of this community.
Well, does that happen?
He lives, he said it. I didn't say it.
He cares about the community, whether he's part of it or not.
He said he lives in Livingston. He doesn't live in Belleville.
That's correct.
Yeah, so what? He's in Livingston. He wants to build a 12-unit? Tell me where there's a 12-unit in that property, right? In the area--
Wait, 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 wait. Now, we're going too far. I'm going to go to the chairman. I'm on court.
I'm going to attack you too, because this gentleman lives in Livingston. He wants to come into our town, he wants to build 12-unit in an area where there's no 12-units. You tell me where there's 12-units in that area.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. That's, that's, that's--
I don't think that's a proper proof either.
He's got to give us, he's got, he has to give a statement. But technically, when you make a statement like this, I don't like it, because a simple reason, you're saying he's looking, he's concerned about the community, he wants to be involved in the community, and he lives in Livingston. That's the first thing. The second, I forgot even what the second thing was.
Well, let's just go back to Bob Gassione. Do you think I care about the community and I don't live in a community? I haven't lived in a community for 50 years.
But you had your office here until recently.
That's a lot of things for the community.
But you had your office here until recently.
I care about--
And you did business here for years. There's a big difference. You have been a part here.
If I may add, I am a property owner in Belleville. I own other properties in the town.
Well, then, that you should say.
I'm happy. My testimony is under oath, sir, so--
Yes, I understand that.
I'm not--
Let's let the applicant put the case in.
Okay, one person at a time may--
Let's let the applicant put the case in, regardless of where he lives. Let's let the applicant put the case in.
Yeah, I just would like to answer all the questions. For Miss Anguina, who I respect, the building on Cortland and Girollin is a gigantic building. We're talking about, it looks to me like it's over 100 units. So, you're asking for other units, over 100 units.
Yeah.
Coming down--
That's nowhere near here.
He's talking about other units that are--
It's not within 200 feet.
That wasn't the question he raised. That wasn't the question he--
I think he raised it because of, well, I don't know why he raised it. I didn't raise it. If you want to ask him why he raised it, that's up to you.
I'm not about to get into this discussion.
All right, then, let's go on with the case. Move on.
Just because it seems the matter, can you tell the board if you own any other properties in Belleville?
Yes, I do.
And--
That's true.
Do you have more than one property?
Yes, I do.
I have no further questions, as witnessed.
Okay. Can you tell us where you have these properties?
I own the property at 37 Lexington Avenue in Belleville, and I also own 22 Van Ruster in Belleville.
Okay.
But just for the record, you don't live in any of these properties. You live in Livingston, is that correct?
Testimony. You mean a testimony?
Right?
No, he already said that. He said--
You don't live here, but you invest in Belleville, is that correct?
I love Belleville, I invested in it, yes.
Oh, so you love Belleville.
Can we, can we-- Can we move on? Move on. Any other questions for the applicant? Any? Now, now, wait a minute. I'm going to tell you how the rules go here, before everybody starts putting their hands up. What happens is, he puts up a witness. We then question the witness. We then open to the public to question the witness on testimony only. You cannot give any testimony at all. When he has finished with his witnesses, and they have been cross-examined both by the board and by the public, the public can then give testimony, of which Mr. Gassione or the board could cross-examine any member of the public who give testimony. Do we all understand here? Any questions? Also, one other thing I want to say, anybody who has a cell phone, of which I'm guilty of also, please turn it off, so we don't get interrupted. Okay? And, okay. Now, any questions by members of the public? I saw a person with his hand up. Do you have a question? Not testimony?
I have a question.
On his testimony only.
Correct.
Let's make sure the board has an opportunity first. I asked him. If they want to-- Nobody else said anything. I asked.
Is he done with this one?
I assume he's done with it.
I have some questions for him.
Man, finish, man.
He said it was it. He sat down. Okay.
I have no further questions.
The board can now question Mr. Saad, which I did.
I think Miss Anguina has a question.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, is it our task?
Yeah, sure, man.
All right, thank you. Mr. Saad, right?
Yes, sir.
Any violations on this property?
No.
Have there been, any violations in the past for formal owners and stuff like that?
For the prior owner, yes. The prior owner was not maintaining the property, but since my period of ownership, there have been zero violations.
All right, so, from my perspective, as a citizen of Belleville, when I pass this property, there's always some type of issue at the corner there. What's going on there? Explain that.
I believe the town has a gas pipe that's--
You gotta keep your voice up, sir, so we can hear you. So, what you're saying is, it's the town, not you, that made that hole?
Correct. Public service.
And what type--
Sorry, yes, sir.
Sorry. Can you please explain that?
I'm not aware of what the town is doing, but the town is doing--
It's a public service hole. Public service hole.
It's a public service hole.
He has no knowledge of it.
They have not contacted me. I have no role in that. That's the town doing something at the, with the gas pipe.
All right, all right, okay. Any other questions by members of the board before I go to the public? No? Yes, sir. It's your turn to ask the question.
Come on up.
You have to come up, and you have to give your name and address, and you get to ask the question. All right.
That is correct.
I said not, for testimony only. I said that.
Name and address?
Yes.
Luis Fuentes, 110 Little Street.
Okay, one question.
My question is, you mentioned that you love Belleville and that you cleaned up the property. Was this cleanup done under your own accord?
Yes.
I personally know that to be untrue, but okay.
That's okay. Can't give testimony now, please. Anybody else have a question of the witness, based upon his testimony only? No? Mr. Gassione, may I call your next witness? Eric? Raise your right hand, please, sir, with regard to this application. Do you swear the testimony or about to give some of the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name?
My name is Eric Hough, H-O-U-G-H.
And that's E-I-R-C, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, can you give the board the benefit of some information about your office and what you do as a forelifter?
Yes, I work at Burton Engineering. It is located at 66 Glen Avenue in Glen Rock, New Jersey. We do all kinds of engineerings, including traffic, civil, MEP. We have our own survey department. I specifically have been working there for 18 years as a design engineer. I'm currently licensed in the state of--
From what school did you graduate?
I went to Rutgers.
Questions? And-- Your license is current.
That is correct.
No further questions?
No further questions, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please describe the existing site.
Site?
Yes, the site is located at 98 Little Street. It is at the northwest corner of the Little Street-Stevens Street intersection. It is Block 9801, Lot 15, and is currently zoned in the RB two-family residential zone.
Please briefly describe the proposed site, and please carefully explain the changes you have made since the submitted documentation.
I have a few more about the existing conditions. Should I?
That's fine, continue.
To go briefly over the existing conditions of the site, the existing property is 7,500 square feet or 0.17 acres. It currently has a 2.5-story frame dwelling on site and one existing driveway along Stevens The existing impervious area is approximately 1,568 square feet or 20.9% of the lot. As far as the existing topography of the site, the site is relatively flat with an elevation, approximate elevation of 100 feet at the street frontages and an elevation 108 feet within the site. The site currently has a driveway along Stevens Street, as I said, and no exist, and no existing driveways along Little Street.
If you're done with that, please review the proposed site plan and then explain the changes you made in the last day or two that day.
Mr. Hough, we have these plans, but if, as Mr. Gassione stated, if you've made changes that we don't have, we're going to need to mark those changes. So, let us know when we--
Absolutely. I'll describe the, the proposed plan that we submitted first, and then I'll present an exhibit with the, the changes. Very good.
Thank you.
All right, as far as the proposed site plan, all existing site features are to be removed in order to construct a proposed three-story apartment building with parking underneath. Access to the parking garage is provided with a two-way access driveway on these plans on, along Stevens Street. New sidewalks are proposed along both frontages. The parking garage will consist of a total of 10 parking spaces with these plans, including one handicap space and two electrical vehicle charging spaces, one of which is sized for ADA compliance. There's also a dedication, dedicated trash bin located on the south end of the parking garage. Now, I want to, I would like to present an exhibit showing the slight changes that we made.
And that exhibit would have two marks, as pointed out by the board, so we, you don't have any of the plans or any marked as exhibits. This would be A1, I assume?
Yes. Hey, one more second?
Yes.
All right, so after looking into the parking situation, we proposed 10 spaces with our original plan, we decided, originally, we had to say driveway along Stevens Street. That's where the existing driveway is now, and we thought that was the best location for the driveway. If we were to, according to this plan, relocate the driveway to Little Street, we were able to get two more parking spaces within the parking garage. This is good for two reasons. You get two more parking spaces, which is crucial, and also by closing the existing driveway along Stevens Street, you add more on-street parking. Along Little Street, creating that curb opening doesn't affect on-street parking because that side of Little Street, currently no parking is allowed on that side of Little Street. So, those are the changes to the site plan that, that we made with this exhibit.
Can you drive through little more detail of the proposed site with the changes? Review the number of spaces, where they are, that kind of--
Yes.
How to ingress and egress the site?
Yes. With this layout now, the two-way access driveway is located on Little Street, approximately in the middle of the frontage. As you go in, you have an ADA parking space on the right side and a typical 9-by-19 space as well. On the left-hand side, you have a total of eight spaces, including two EV charging locations. And we were able to get two additional spaces because we relocated the site driveway. So, now we have a total of 12 parking spaces located in the, in the garage.
And what is the total requirement of spaces?
The total requirement of spaces is 14.
And if you take the two credits for EV, do you get that 14 number?
You do with this layout.
Thank you. Now, can you discuss the existing drainage and the changes you have to the drainage pipe?
Yes. Uh, the proposed, uh, proposed development will increase the impervious coverage from 20.9% to 88.7%. To account for this, uh, we have a proposed infiltration basin, which is located under the parking garage on the south side of the site. I can locate it, uh...
Please.
On my grading and drainage part. Uh, so the underground infiltration basin will be located on the south side of the property. And when accounting for this, we will reduce the, uh, stormwater runoff in the two-year, 10-year, and 100-year course.
Can you review the proposed plans here?
Uh, yes. Uh, I'd like to show sheet C 2.4, which is our landscape plan. Around the building, we have some minimal landscape divided on both frontages, including shrubbery and decorative glasses, uh, grasses along Little Street. Uh, this would obviously be revised slightly because, uh, if we relocate the driveway, uh, we would have to remove some of this landscaping, but we could provide more on the other side because we're closing that driveway. Uh, we have, uh, shrubbery located along the Stevens Street side of the building as well, and there will also be a variety of evergreen shrubs located on the west side of the proposed building.
Hey, if the board will excuse me, I'm gonna continue. But I suffer from migraines, and migraines create a situation where I can't see you correctly. It only lasts about a half an hour or so. If I'm a little hesitant, I don't need to stop. If I'm a little hesitant, please forgive me.
No, no problem.
I can't really read right now. Uh, describe the lighting, if you would.
Yes. Our next sheet of the site plan set is, uh, C 2.5, which is the lighting plan. On the Stevens Street side of the building, there are two wall-mounted, uh, lights and two soffit lights located near the lobby entrance. And there will also be soffit lights at the parking garage entrance, uh, with ceiling lights throughout the parking garage. This plan shows the soffit lights above the parking garage entrance on Stevens, but as I said, that would be relocated to, uh, the new driveway locations along Little Street.
Now, that driveway location on Little Street would be open, there's no gate here, or there is?
There, there is a gate, there is a gate, yes.
And how would the residents access that?
Uh, I might have to defer to the board, but typically...
So we defer to the architect, that's fine. We'll defer that question to the architect.
Yeah, architect, not me.
All right, now, again, you've explained the parking, you've explained the ingress and egress, but just one more time, is it with the ingress and egress? How will that be effectuating any problems with the sight line or anything like that?
No, I don't see any problems with the egress on Little Street. Uh, as you know, Little Street is, has more volume from, than, uh, than Stevens Street. Uh, but to, since the proposed development has a total of 12 units, we're talking about four, maybe five site, uh, peak hour trips in the AM and the PM peak hour. Uh, I don't see an issue as far as traffic is concerned because of the, uh, the minimum volume of the, of the section.
And you talked about the use variance that we've got, both variables are permitted. How about bulk variance, please? List the bulk variance.
Absolutely. All right, uh, as far as the bulk variance, uh, there is a, I'd like to go back to our site plan. I'll use the exhibit. Uh, there will be a front yard variance, uh, where 20 feet is required. Uh, zero is proposed, the lot coverage, there is a lot coverage variance where 75% is required, 88.67% is proposed. Uh, there's also an open space variance where 25% is required and 11.67% is proposed. Uh, our submitted plans, there was a, a parking variance, uh, where 14 are required with only 10 spaces provided. But with the new one, 12 spaces will be, uh, provided with the EV bonus comes out to 14, so technically that would not be a variance.
Can you review where the garbage will be taken from?
Uh, yes, we have a trash bin area located on the south side of the, uh, parking garage area. This is actually a little more convenient to have it here with the relocated driveway because it can be taken out to the street through the garage entrance.
Is there any exterior signage?
Uh, the only signage we have right now is traffic-related. There's one, there's one proposed stop sign located at the, uh, the site driveway exit.
And lastly, did you review Mr. Eric's letter?
I did, yes.
And did you review Mr. the, I'm sorry, Mr. Vander's letter? The zoning letter from the zoning office?
Oh, the, the earlier one?
Letter that I...
Yes, yes, correct.
Have any comments with regard to either of those letters?
No, uh, most, I think we can, uh, comply with all the comments that I saw.
I have no further questions than this one.
Any questions by members of the board of this one? No, he's got, he's got some more.
Question from Mr. Gassillon. Uh, in Mr. Vander's report, it talks about the density.
Density?
Yeah.
The density will be, and it's on record, I think Mr. Hurst pointed out in his letter. It is variance, for sure. Yeah, the planner will review that. He was listing bulk variances. If I didn't make that clear, I'm sorry. I'm sorry? That, there is a use variance, a density variance, and a group of bulk variances. And the planner will cover everything that he can. If one was missed by my engineer, the planner has the ball. George Williams is the planner, and I expect him shortly if he's not here. And he is here.
I'm sorry, Willie.
We are looking for, uh, some intel on density. My next question is...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you two when you talk like that.
Yeah, we're there.
Okay. I can hear you guys. Yep.
So we're gonna have some testimony on density, but it's not a Mr. Vander's.
Mr. Vander's, I'm sorry. The testimony will be put in by George Williams with regard to all the variances. Absolutely. He is the proposed final witness.
I'm sure you had something important to allocate about the number of units.
As the civil engineer, I'm typically given a building, so I think I might not be the right...
The number of units was decided by the client applicant. I can call him back and have him testify to why he decided that, if you'd like. Okay, after, if we would finish, wait. If we finish with the engineer, I'll call him back.
Uh, any other questions by members of the board? Yes, Mr. Mafuji.
Uh, yes, you mentioned the trash cans. How many are there and how much capacity?
I, I didn't go over the capacity, usually the architect does that, uh, but it, it is my understa- are you talking about the, how it's brought out to the street or collection? It, it's my understanding that there's gonna be a full-time super on-site that's going to be, uh, collecting the trash and bringing it out to the street for public collection. That's my understanding.
No mention of recycling.
Uh, I, I believe it would be incorporated in, in the trash bin area.
Can't assume anything.
I'm sorry, you have a question?
Okay, you cannot assume anything. You also mentioned the shrubs all around.
Yes.
Do you, you have any idea how many mature trees would be cut down to put this building up?
Now, Burton Engineering didn't do the survey, and the survey didn't pick up the trees, but there would be some trees that would have to be removed for this project, yes. I don't have the exact number.
And based on your visual observation, are there many trees on that property?
It looks like along most frontages, there are trees. If I had to guesstimate, estimate the number of trees, I would say 20.
I would say 20 to 30, plus there are more back also.
Again, I'm just guessing from looking at the site.
Well, since your building would cover just about the whole thing, I would say they all have to be cut down, probably.
I would say, I would, I would agree with that.
Now, Mr. Philano, come on. Unless you have another one, do you have another question? Mafuji?
Uh, not...
I'll let Philano ask first, then you can come back.
We have Mr. Vander's report, I don't have...
Is it in the application?
It's part of the application and etc.
I don't have it.
I'm sorry. I have, I have a question of Mr. Vander. I have a question, Mr. Vander.
Yes.
All these things that are allowed, proposed, etc., okay, okay? Now, this is based on a RB zone, am I correct?
Yes.
And this is not allowed in an RB zone, am I correct?
It is not, one, two, and three-family houses are.
Are all, that's it?
That's it.
Now, in a multi-family zone, what would be the requirement for, uh, minimum lot area and minimum lot width? I believe the depth would still be 100, but is the minimum lot width 100?
In a multi-family, first off, we don't have multi-family zones anymore. We have mixed-use zones, sorry, downtown, so a lot...
You don't have a C-zone?
We don't have a C, we have a mixed-use BG zone.
No C-zone anymore?
That's gone.
When did this disappear?
We got, the RC zone got turned into basically to a family zone.
The RC zone, when did this happen?
2019.
Really? Is there any density involved now?
There's, so the RB district doesn't have a density number to it, it's just got a maximum unit count of three. So if you wanna go by the average 50 by 100 lot and say three families on that, see what the density comes out to, I could do that.
Now, in what zone can you have multi-family then? Anything over three, that's what I'm asking for.
The BG or the BA district, which are downtown districts, nowhere else.
Nowhere else?
Nowhere else.
You can't put multi-family anywhere else?
We don't like multi-family.
You don't? Oh, that's interesting. Okay, but in the, but in, in this zone, the most you can have is a three-family?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I asked.
So, so, so we're not talking density per se, it's three fam- three-family? If it's beyond three-family, that picks up density, but it's not a density issue.
Exactly, so you're not looking for another D-variance?
It's just multi, it's more than what you're determining.
Yeah, so, I mean, max density for the area based on a 50 by 100 lot, the average, if you put a three-family on a 50 by 100 lot, you'd still, you'd come up to about 26 units an acre, if you wanna try to compare. Is that what you're trying to come up with?
Yes.
Wait a minute, wait, if you put on a 50 by 100-foot lot, a three-family?
It's 26 units an acre.
26.
Right, so...
On a 50 by 100?
If you look at Mr. Vander's, this is my voice. If you look at Mr. Vander's report, he did a calculation on this lot.
It's 70.
70, yes.
That's my point.
Three times multiple, okay. All right, now that we got that straightened out, please. So in, in those zones where you can build a multi-family, what are the lot dimensions that are allowed?
So, there, again, it's different because it's downtown, so we play with those dimensions differently. Uh, if I look into those, there is none.
There's what?
There's none.
There's none what?
There's no dimensions. There's setbacks, but you have, or your rear yard setback has to be...
There doesn't have to be a minimum lot size?
No, because it's downtown.
I don't need the minimum lot size or a density, no density requirement.
Downtown's based upon commercial space, parking, the different things. You can't compare the two districts. Not anymore.
Okay, any other questions of this witness based upon his testimony? Mr. Mafuji, back to you.
I'm sorry, since you moved the driveway, do you realize how much traffic there is on that street compared to the other?
Uh, like I said, I believe there is more volume on that street, but because of the limited peak hour trips generated by this proposed use, I do not see an impacted level service or anything. We're talking about four or five peak hour trips generated by this use.
Any other questions by members of the board? No. Questions by members of the public on testimony given only? No, yes, you, you're first. No, you took a second. Yes, you have to come up because we have to have your name and address, and you can ask him the question. Plus, you can see the plans if there's any question on the plan. Go ahead.
How many, uh, daily trips are you...
Could you state, state your name and give it to the record? I know you came up.
There's one that's on Little Street. Um, how many daily trips are you assuming are gonna be generated per unit?
Uh, I didn't do a traffic analysis with this because the residential nature is a low-trip generation. Uh, so I know because I do a lot of traffic testimony that 12 units will only generate four to five peak-out or trips. Daily trips, I don't have that number in front of me right now, but we're talking about how many units? We're talking about 12 units and, huh, you come, you come, you leave, you come home. Uh, let's say everyone has a car there, goes in, goes out, uh, 14 bedrooms, 28, maybe third, 30 to 40 daily trips possibly, I would say, and I'm just estimating.
So, I looked this up. Institute of Transportation Engineering, um, estimates six to eight daily trips per vehicle. I don't know if there's gonna be more than 14, um, and so, on a busy street, six to eight daily trips, 14 vehicles, that's a whole lot of trips.
I agree.
Obviously...
No, no testimony from anybody, please.
Objective, six to eight daily trips.
May I, may I respond to that?
Sure. Yeah, he can respond, of course.
Traffic impact is really analyzed on a concentrated peak hour. That's why everything you do in transportation engineering and traffic impact studies, you do it on peak hour. Because daily trips are spread out. So you have a concentrated peak hour during when the roadways are the busiest during the peak hour in the AM and the PM. You add five to six, four to five peak-hour trips, you are not making a significant impact to the area and traffic with this development.
But even if you cut it in half from the six to eight that I quoted, we're still talking about seven to eight daily trips, right?
Yes.
During peak hours.
But like I said, seven to eight peak-hour trips, you're saying, or do you?
If we're doing, if we take four, for example, during peak, peak hours by 14 spaces, we're still looking at upwards of 60 to 70 trips during peak hours. And that's assuming there are more than 14 cars.
That is, what, what you're saying is inaccurate. This development will not create anything over six peak-hour trips, and worst-case scenario. Not everyone leaves at the same time, so I just don't agree with the...
But that's what peak hour is though, isn't it? It's everyone leaving during peak hours, is everyone leaving...
No, peak hour is the peak hour of traffic for development in one hour. That's what peak hour is.
What would you consider peak hour?
Uh, it's somewhere between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, which is...
At 4:00 to 6:00 at night.
And 4:00 to 6:00.
4:00 to 6:00 at night, I understand. Just to mind that on the record, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mafuji? No, Giga, Giga, yes.
Um, have you been down Little Street 8 o'clock in the morning?
I have not, no.
Have you been to Little Street, getting off Route 21 and trying to get on Little Street after 4:30 in the afternoon?
I have not, but I just know that...
I'm gonna tell you what you're competing with.
Understood.
I'm gonna tell you what you're competing with, all right? You're competing with one of the most popular gyms in New Jersey. Spread at the corner, right, which a lot of our double PD frequent, all right, and has a large membership. One of the most popular gyms in New Jersey, right? You're competing with that. You're competing with people coming off Route 21 and trying to get back onto Route 21. Do you know how long it took me to get to work? You know how long it took me to get onto Route 21 from Little Street? Yes?
I don't know how long it took you, but...
Took 2.5 minutes.
Yes.
You know why? Because for the past 30 minutes, I timed it.
I understand, but this...
So from Little, there's, there's a bunch of traffic, so you wanna add a building with 12 units, right? It's gonna add 12 more families, right? Onto our property, uh, until, into that little area right there, and it's just gonna add more traffic. So it's gonna be more congestion, more congestion. You know what I'm talking about? So that means if I make a left or a right onto Little, into Little Street, try to get on Route 21. On Route 21, it's gonna be more time for me to get to work, right?
Yes, but it's so...
Is that correct?
We're talking about an extra car.
You're talking about 12 extra cars, but two extra, if I, if I'm not mistaken, you tell me, two, two bedrooms, is that correct, yes or no?
Yes.
All right, now you're talking about other units, right?
Yes.
Better than one bedroom, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there might be a possibility that we're, we're dealing with, what, what, 14, maybe 15 cars, we don't know, right?
There's 12 parking spaces in that...
I get that, I get that, I get that, but we're not thinking about the people that live in that neighborhood, the people that have to get on Route 21, that people need to go up Little Street. What, what, what's going on with that? I mean, there's, there's a big giant congestion issue there in that area.
I object, first thing, may I go, Mr. Anguina is correct about the entrance to Route 21, the bottom of Little Street.
The entrance going north, only going north.
Either way, down, down bottom of Little Street, there's congestion. I, I live, I've been here, I have an office there forever, there's not a lot of congestion on Little Street itself. There is not...
Mr. Mr. Gassillon, Mr. Gassillon, to be honest, you had your office, I knew you'd get out of it.
My first office is on Little Street.
How old ago?
30 years ago.
30, this is different now, 30 years later.
It was a busy street.
There's more people with cars 30 years later.
Commission chair.
Hold, 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 I have to have, I have to have some water here.
Okay, let me know when we're gonna go back and analyze some more.
Okay, let me know when we're gonna go back and analyze the law. No, waters.
We have to have, we have to have order, but, okay.
No, I'm not okay, I can't take that record, just like.
You can't take a record, you can't, only one person could talk at a time.
I, I need, I need to say, this brought to my attention, there's no traffic study, there's no te- testimony based on a traffic study, and I think we should get off this because it's all opinion and who has seen what, and that can be discussed when the board makes a determination, or if Mr. Gassiel wants to come back with a more definitive traffic statement. Right now, we're, we're just, people are giving around.
I certainly agree with Council State.
And I agree too.
I just was responding to what was being said.
Okay.
And that, and that's fine, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm okay with a, a traffic statement or whatever, but I'm telling you, after twenty-five years of living in this town, Little Street is an issue. It's always been an issue. That's what I'm trying to tell you. For the past thirty years, I have worked in Patterson, Patterson Public Schools, okay? And I have to go down Little Street to get onto Route 21.
I, I agree with that one.
And you wanna build the twelve units.
All right, all right, all right. We could argue, we could argue this at the end, let's just get the testimony in, let's get the testimony in, and we could all put our opinions of how the board members feel at the end, okay? Because that's really the proper way to do it. Okay, any other, you have another question? Thank you.
Technically, it's a question for Mr. Bandit. The EV spots, one equals two, correct?
Uh, yes, up to ten percent.
Two credits.
Yeah, up to ten percent requirement.
I thought it was up to two spaces.
Ten percent is how many spaces?
No, on, on, on previous cases, the state statute was supposed to be, up to two spaces can give you up to four, but the third space is only a regular space. I've never heard that it's a percentage. No, it was two, it was two, on previous cases.
Theory on that?
Would you like me?
Yes.
Uh, the state legis- uh, legis- state legislation, uh, for EV parking for residential is fifteen percent of the total required. So total required is fourteen, so you have to have fifteen percent of that be EV. Out of, uh, out of those, so we have two. So out of those two spaces, uh, a percentage of those can be counted as two, but only ten percent of the total required. So that would be one point four rounded up to six.
You round up to the next highest number, that's the issue with.
So what, what do we have, is it a two or four, or what are we talking about?
In essence, the two or four, yes.
Two or four, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Big physical spaces.
Any other question by member of the board? Okay, any questions of this witness by members of the public? Mr. Fran Antoni, I believe you wanted to ask a question?
Yes.
I saw your hand up before, before we went into all this discussion.
Yes, Mr. Fran Antoni, one twenty-nine, I'm in progress with the development. I have several questions, since the impervious areas been increased from twenty-nine to seventy, I think eighty-seven or eighty-eight?
I believe it was twenty point nine to eighty-eight point seven, correct?
Right, that's quite a big increase.
It is, and that is why we are, uh, proposing an underground industrial transportation program.
My next question, I think you're ready to answer, you haven't been to the intersection of Main and Little. Definitely, you said, or, let me ask you, have you been there?
I visited the site today, uh, yeah, and I drove that way, so yes, I have passed through it today, correct?
Do you have any knowledge of the, the history of that intersection?
I do not, no.
Um, there's other questions, the underground tank that you're proposing to accept the runoff. Where is that going to exit to eventually?
Uh, it goes through a, uh, outlet con- uh, outlet control unit, and then it is being connected to the existing system, specifically the inlet on Little Street.
To our existing storm system?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Do you know where that goes to?
I don't, but we would have to get approval from.
Okay. Another question, said there's gonna be decorative grasses and shrubs along Stevens Street. If I'm looking at that plan, I can't see from the building. What's the distance from the building to the curb on Stevens Street?
Uh, let me go to the landscaper. Uh, the distance from the building to the curb on Little Street is a pro- it's about twelve feet.
I guess Stevens Street is it?
Stevens Street is about, about the same, twelve feet, and.
How much do that have to do with sidewalks?
Uh, we're replacing the sidewalks, right now the sidewalks.
And what's the width of the sidewalk, do you mind me?
Uh, the width of the sidewalks are four feet. And, and to the landscaping question, uh, we have spaces for landscaping in these areas along uh, both Little and Stevens Street, uh, within our property, within the property, not in the, by the way.
So in relation to the whole site, you have a shrubbery and grass areas microscopic, right?
Yes, and we also have, uh, shrubbery where we could put it, we have it all along the west side of the building as well, evergreen shrubs.
Right, now what are the sides of the parking spaces?
The sides of the parking spaces? Uh, they're, uh, are you talking about the, the striping?
The sides of parking.
Oh, the side.
Are they nine by nine feet?
Sorry, I misheard, I thought you said the sides of them, I'm sorry. Uh, they are nine by nineteen feet.
And is that sufficient center area?
Yeah, it's twenty-four feet, it's twenty-four feet wide, which is sufficient for backing up. That's the standard for perpendicular space.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions by members of the public? Mr. the, yes, come on up.
Give you any entries that they had to check.
When, when you, when you finish, why don't you sit next to Mr. Fran and tell me how I can teach you?
I need to have access to the camera.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get people to ask questions, you can be in the front.
He aspirated last week, so it's.
Mike, just state your name for the record.
Yes, Michael Sheldon, still at forty-seven questions. Uh, just a couple quick questions, I apologize if you address this by catch. Uh, will any of the residential units have balconies?
Uh, that, I have to defer to the architect.
I have never had his, his testimony. And as far as rooftop terrorists, is this an architectural question?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, just to piggyback on the question several board members asked a few moments ago, uh, with twelve residential units in this complex, sitting on a lot that's seventy-five hundred square feet, uh, quick math, that's a density of almost seventy units per acre.
We already have that.
I just wanna make sure.
No, we don't.
I agree, I agree.
Then we bore everything, we already brought it up.
I have extensive background in mathematics, I just wanted to concur that I agree that seventy units.
Any, do you have any other questions?
Uh, no, not at this time, not at this.
Okay, any other questions by members of the public? Yes, sir, come on up.
Gary, get free on some of the way up here. The shrubbery.
Sir, what's your last name?
Wait, wait, sir, we gotta get it for the record.
Yeah. State it again, please, louder, too.
And yours?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. The shrubbery.
Will you spell, listen, listen, spell your name pretty good, turn it, please. H I A, D O Y, okay. Gary, first name.
Pencil, got it.
Okay. You need the address?
No.
Okay.
The shrubbery, is it gonna be up against the building, or is it gonna be along the curb?
It's gonna be up against the building. Because the curb is in the right of way, so we, we have the proposed landscaping within the property.
Is there a strip along the curb and the sidewalk?
Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna remain as it is now, there's gonna be a, uh, the sidewalk we're replacing because the existing conditions of the sidewalk is, you know, is pretty bad. So we were gonna replace the sidewalks, uh, along the frontages and maintain that lawn area between the curb and sidewalk.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions by members of the public of this witness based on testimony only? None, you may call your next witness.
Mr. Zawada.
Wait, wait, wait.
Will you give your questions, guys?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. You were saying the front yard is trophy?
Uh, the question was the distance from the existing curbing to the building. But the building is at the property line.
I don't understand, in Mr. Bandit's report, for the front yard, it says zero.
That's, that's what, the building is at the property line.
It's on the property line, it's zero.
So it's a zero, yeah.
Right away.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is that all your questions, for sure? Okay. Next witness.
I'm gonna recall this to Saad because Mr. Zawada had a question.
Okay.
Mr. Saad, can you please come back to the stage?
No problem.
Yes. Mr. Zawada's question was, I better let you phrase it, I don't want to make my mistake.
I didn't even come up with that, and then I'm gonna go far.
Good question, so when we were looking at this site, trying to determine what would be the best suitable property for it, initially, you look and you see how high could I go, right? And we didn't wanna go too high, so we limited it to three floors. And when we limit it to three floors and incorporate the ground floors parking, you then are left with two floors of residential space, and based on the size that's there, we were left with six units per floor. Being that it was a cornered unit, business district, we thought that that would be the appropriate number for that space.
So my next question would be, was you said that your own other properties were not here, right?
Yes, sir.
So, knowing that it, you're not, you're not at all the spiral, you're familiar with purchasing property, one, then that one, correct?
I have purchased properties in Bellevue, actually.
So you would know that this particular use is not permitted, correct?
Correct, yes.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yes.
Question.
Yes, sir.
You just stated that you were looking for the best use because, in a business district, am I correct? That's what you just.
You missed, not a business.
I didn't mean, I'm not using by the.
You said in the business district, am I correct?
I don't mean it in the technical form that you're referring to, I mean it as, you guys earlier had referred to how there's a, I just wanna ask you a question.
Go ahead, I, go ahead, go ahead.
I don't mean it in a, any technical form as, I don't know if you have a district in the town that's called a business district. I refer to it as that there's an area of town that has, from what I see, a large gym, it has some residential occupancies, it has some office buildings, so there are various types of buildings that are in that neighborhood currently, and that's why we thought this would be most appropriate. I didn't mean to refer to any particular type of zone in town, I thought it's.
Mr. Bandit, a question, is this a business district?
No.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Saad.
Yes, sir.
You, we have you on testimony saying that you love Bellevue, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, what section of Bellevue are you planning on building the structure in?
This is east of Washington Avenue, sir, the Valley.
East section of, okay, perfect, do you know the history of the valley, sir? Yes or no?
What are you referring to by?
You know the history of the valley, yes or no?
No, I don't.
All right, perfect, thank you, sir.
How many blocks down from Washington Avenue is this block?
Approximately two and a half.
So it's nowhere near Washington Avenue, it's away from it.
Two and a half blocks, presidential street.
It's presidential, right, yes, thank you, normally reads presidential.
Thank you.
Any other questions by members of the board? Any further questions by members of the public, because he gave a judicial testimony?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, of him?
Just for the board, and because I'm not, I, I'm, I'm novice, I'm new at this, and I, yes, yes.
No, no, you can't ask the board questions. Ma'am, ma'am. Because we have to do this in an orderly way.
Yes.
You cannot ask questions of the board, you can give testimony at the end, and I said that.
Okay.
Your own testimony.
Okay.
But right now, all we're dealing with is, is the witnesses, and you may cross-examine a witness only on testimony you already gave.
Oh, okay, could I question him on how he came about, like, did he go to that little area, right? Where we live?
Not on the record.
Excuse me?
Why? Oh, yeah, yeah, ma'am, ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah, come on up, come on up, give your name, you'll be asking more questions later anyway, you'll be giving testimony, so.
I'm sorry.
We'll just give you, you know, I, I, I want, you wanna ask what question you could ask, and, and I don't mind.
All right, my name is Marilyn Ricardo, and I live in two ninety-seven, seven. And I care a lot about this town, and the area that I live in, and what I see so far, sir.
Ma'am, 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 you're giving testimony, you're not asking a question.
Okay. I just wanna know, has he gone around the area, if I could ask that, and see the area and walked around? At the peak times that he's talking about traffic?
I think that's a proper question.
I didn't testify about traffic, but yes, I have been in the area, the whole hours of the day. I've been there during morning rush hour, I've been there during evening rush hour, I've been there during the nighttime.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it. All right.
Thank you.
The answer's your pleasure. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Saad.
Here we go.
Yeah, I got a question for you. So since you've been at the site of Little Street at those times, right, what did you witness, sir?
I witnessed that Stevens is a typical residential street that you would imagine, Little is more of an active thoroughfare.
And you noticed that there is an abundance of traffic on that street, is that correct, yes or no?
I wouldn't characterize it as an abundance, but there is traffic on that street, yes.
Can you also attest that that street right there is a major throughway to get onto Route 21, yes or no?
It leads to Route 21.
All right, and you know that an abundance of the residents of Bellevue use that street and access that street to get on Route 21 in the mornings, and when you're coming back home from Route 21? And you, can, can, you've been there, um, a number of times, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman.
I've been there, but it's not my place to say what residents of Bellevue do or don't do.
Oh, great.
All right, all right, now.
Mr. President, Jim.
Yes, now you have a question.
No, I don't have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a solution. If everybody keeps asking the same question, just ask for Mr. Gassiel to do a traffic study, that's it.
Okay, all right, all right. Do you wanna bring your next witness up?
I do.
Okay. Does anybody who wanna ask a question, nobody? Okay, good. The witnesses are staying, so if there's any questions at the end, you can always bring them up. Go ahead, sir. Please raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application, you swear the testimony you're about to give, show you the truth.
Yes.
State your name, explain your last name, please, for the record.
It's Harry Zawada, Z A W A D A.
Z A W A D A?
No, D A.
What school did you go to, or graduate from? I'll put after Mr. Gassiel while he's giving everything out.
NJIT.
NJIT in North. Okay, and you're, you have a license in architecture, and the license is currently, go.
Yes, it is.
For a minute, what I've been handed, this is A one?
I don't know, that's why I just asked.
So I think this is part of the record, this is already in, am I correct, Harry?
It is, the elevation is in color, I don't know.
Well, it's a color, make it A two, it'd be A two, right?
What was A one?
If you're already here.
A one was a revised cycle.
It's only in color, ma'am, I made this A two. It's in color.
This is A one, this is A one or A two? It's underneath, look, look, underneath here, see?
Need to start again?
All right. That's what it is.
Same thing, only in color, you made this exhibit. Are you making this exhibit?
Yes.
A1 or A2?
Okay. Did you qualify my witness, Mr. Chairman? Yes, I qualified him for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything to help and move things along.
This is Zawada. Would you describe the existing structure on the site?
Existing structure is a two and a half story wood-framed single-family residence.
What kind of condition is it in?
In poor.
And if this application were to be approved, would that structure be demolished?
Yes, it would.
And can you generally describe what it is your client is seeking to put up on this property?
Client is seeking to put up, two-floor over one-story parking, former family.
And can you tell us what the exterior of that structure would look like?
Exterior of the structure at grade would be a cosmetic concrete block or stone. Above that would be brick with composite panels. Color palette is as you see here, this maroon or darker red color. Some wood accents around the center, aluminum frame windows and some composite panels at the top.
And would you describe the proposed interior of the first level?
The interior first level is parking at grade along with a lobby, elevator, package room, mailboxes, so on.
Would you describe the proposed first floor of the structure or the second floor, whichever way you want to describe it? First floor with living accommodations?
Both, both living floors, second, third are the same. And as we've stated, there's five one-bedroom apartments and one two-bedroom apartment. Spread out evenly across around the, what would you call it? The antelope of the building, with a central core at the front with a stair and elevator and another egress stair towards the southwest corner.
And how would the garbage at the site be handled?
Centrally, we have a trash chute. So that trash chute, trash drops in, is collected in the small trash room where there would be bins. Those bins would be swapped out and brought over to a trash holding area, either here, depending upon where that driveway entrance is. That trash area can be here or here.
And how would the trash be brought out or how would it be picked up?
Again, ownership has stated that there would be a super on-site. So at the end of the day or every other day, those bins would be swapped out and would be brought out through the garage to either Stevens or Little for cording.
And would there be any signage on the building?
No signage other than for traffic and the building number itself.
And lighting on the building?
Lighting on the building is limited for safety, lighting at means of egress at the entry and at the garage.
And did you have an opportunity to review Mr. Harris's report?
I did.
And do you have any comments on that report?
I do not.
Did you have an opportunity to review Mr. Band's letter of denial?
Yes.
Any comments on that letter of denial?
I do not.
Meaning we are able to comply with everything set forth in there?
Correct.
No further questions.
Any questions by members of the board? Mr. Malfo.
Two things. On Z1, Z-1.0, we're just adding.
Yes.
That's the old.
It's the same, it's the same. The only thing new in the head that you got now is the color. And it's a miniature.
Yeah, okay.
And just for record, sorry, again.
On the podium, the, well, I'll call it the black area surrounding the building. What is it?
That's just meant to show grade. It's just, it's just a graphic thing, just a landmark. Rather than just it be a line, it's a, it's a base.
Okay. I put for where the entrance to the garage was.
Of course. Then I'm not doing like.
Yes, yes, Mr. Band. Before it was brought up that the entrance was being moved to Little Street, the garage entrance?
Yeah, correct.
On the plan, it's still currently on Stevens Street.
Correct. That, that plan of moving was either yesterday or today.
So this is not.
These have not been updated, correct.
Any other questions by members of the board? Mr. Zawada?
Is it, you might not sign it?
No, it is not. Composite.
No, this isn't composite.
The, yes, yeah, like a, like a heartbeat pump, like a clockwork?
That's the wrong.
Any other questions by members of the board?
Yeah, just to, just to have absolute transparency, where is the entrance to the driveway? Please, can you please explain that? Is it on Stevens or is it on Little?
It's on Little, it's been revised.
All right, so just, so just for the record, you can give us something that does not show that, right?
That's correct. The original plan was changed today to add two parking spaces. And in order to do that, had to change the driveway to ingress and egress on Little Street.
Now, can I ask a question?
You sure?
To get this over with once and for all.
Go ahead.
Where on Little Street of the lot will the driveway go in? To the left of the buildings? Close to the corner, in the middle?
I rather.
It's all, it's actually would be.
Engineer.
It would be the middle of that elevation.
Thank you. Thank you. So it's middle between the end of the lots and the corner?
Even, even the old plan, the parking plan, the drive aisle, that door would be at the end of the drive aisle on those jobs.
But that would be on, on Stevens, sir?
No, no. In this old plan, the drive aisle is, is here and here.
Oh, so it's, it's coming in from the end of the lot? Here it's coming in from the middle of the lot, is that what you're telling me?
If we come in, if you follow this road down, that's exactly where that would be.
That's in the middle, right.
Correct.
And before it was at the end of Stevens?
Correct. Where, where the existing drive.
Right, okay. Just wanted to get that clear once and for all, so I don't have any more questions about it. Everybody happy now? Okay. Any other questions by members of the board of the witness?
No.
None, okay. Any questions by members of the public of the witness? Come on up.
Is there any, is there any parking on Little Street alongside, outside of the?
An engineer testified to that, and you can re-ask it, your question, if that's okay with the chairman?
Yes, it is.
No parking?
I didn't answer it, he will.
Currently, there is no parking allowed on the project side of Little Street. On the other side there.
Is, is parking allowed on Stevens Street?
Yes.
Yes. So technically, by eliminating the driveway, you added a parking space on Stevens?
That is correct, which I believe I testified to.
Okay, just want to make sure everybody understands once and for all. Any other questions by members of the public? Yes, come on up. I hate to have to have you come up.
It's okay.
Again, Michael Sheldon, 47th Floyd Street. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about parking, but one thing I haven't heard mentioned is visitor parking. Are you required under our ordinances to provide any on-site visitor parking? Or will all visitor parking be relegated to industry?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I don't object to the question, but I don't think the architect is.
I think that's a question of Mr. Band. Question of Mr. Band.
Okay, we're in a residential district, so there isn't a requirement for the residential district for visitor parking. Their houses. If you go towards our mixed-use district, like I said, it's different.
What is it in the mixed-use district?
Requirement starts at about 20 units and it's one space per every 10.
So technically, this wouldn't apply?
It wouldn't apply.
But it's only 12 units.
But if you want to use that theory, you could say 1.2, so two spaces if you're.
But it doesn't apply in this case, even if this was on Washington Avenue? Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. It's been stated that the parking situation has recently changed in the last 24 hours or so. I assume that you haven't had a chance to revise any architectural drawing. It was just asked by so many board members exactly where the entrance egress will be onto Little Street. But you haven't had a chance, I guess, to prepare your, or modify your own, I guess.
And the engineer can answer that question, Ash, but he can re-answer if you got it.
It would be nice to actually have the updated architectural rendering so we all could see exactly.
It's a simple thing. The driveway is eliminated there and it's moved here. You just showed it to us. Want to show him like you showed me? Thank you.
So this existing aisle, the location of this aisle doesn't change. We park to either side of that aisle. Initially, the drive, the entrance being on Stevens Street here, we'll remove that and put it at the end of the drive aisle on Little Street. So we get the credit for having more spaces here. So instead of ingress, egress off of Stevens, we now ingress, egress off of.
And you also get an additional parking space on Stevens.
I had asked a little while ago about the parties, are any balconies for rooftop terrorists? Will any such things be part of this project?
There are no balconies on either, on any of the floors. There is a rooftop amenity.
And is that the extent across the entire area?
No, that's, right now it's limited to 600 square feet adjacent to bulkhead, the stair. So you can walk up or take the elevator to the roof. And that, that square footage is a variable in zoning to provide for.
There's still be some privacy if this gets approved. Anyone using a rooftop terrace won't be able to look directly down upon the neighbors' back doors.
Correct, right, you've got in the middle.
I have to stop a minute. You know what? There's like 10 conversations going on at times, and the whispering, it's all I hear. I can't get the testimony because I'm hearing conversations. So I don't know what we can do about it, but I can't take it down when everybody's talking at once, even if it's whispering. We'll go forward and I'll make a note in the record that there's multiple conversations going on and I'm not taking it down.
That rooftop amenity is about 25 feet setback from the side and rear.
So some privacy will be maintained between the neighbors and patrons of that rooftop?
Yes, that was okay.
All right. Yeah, that's, that is for the moment. All right, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions by members of the public? Mr. Fran Antonio.
Just one, are any handicap parking spaces there?
Yes.
Two, uh, three.
Three.
One, single?
We have one ADA compliant and one EV compliant, so technically two, but one real one.
Right.
So you have two EV spots?
There's two EV spots, one of which is accessible or handicap compliant.
So that a handicap person takes that EV spot that's can't be used for charging anymore, right?
I assume anybody that occupies this building would be issued a parking space with their unit, but that has to be worked out with management.
I have a question. So say I'm not handicapped, but I need to use the EV. And the only EV that's available is a handicap spot that's EV. How does that work out?
I believe the EV law is, it just has to be sized for ADA compliance. So if you're not handicapped or have a handicapped vehicle, you can still use that spot. It just has to be sized for ADA.
So while that other person's waiting for their car to be charged and I'm handicapped now, now I'm, I'm.
Correct.
I can't park there?
Not in the EV spot, but you do have the ability to park in another.
But what if the other person's there? The other handicap person's there?
Isn't that two EVs?
So, understood.
This is compliant with the law.
I understand.
But there is two EV spots, am I correct?
That's correct.
The one is handicapped, that's correct. And if the person is a handicap, they can still use it.
That's correct.
Okay. So there's still two EV spots. Any other questions by any members of the board or the public? You have a question. Of course, I just wanted, if this is approved, can we get, we've been asking for temperature-controlled trash rooms.
Will certainly comply.
Anybody else? No, that's it. Your next witness.
I'd like to have a five-minute recess before I call my final witness.
I'm sure our, our stenographer would like it too. Okay, we'll have a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Back in, in session, the zoning board. Oh, thank you. For October 3rd, 2024. Mr. Gashion, I understand you want to make a statement?
Mr. Chairman, my client has heard comments made by board members and would like to return the case to consider some of those comments and possibly amend his application.
Now, let's get something straight.
Okay.
Okay, because of all these people, I assume we're all here for this application?
Yes.
Are you adjourned it to what date?
Next regularly scheduled meeting.
All right, wait, wait. Now, are you, if you're making a change.
If the changes are not done in time, I will let the person who runs the agenda, this Gina know, and let any, any board, any objective can call to see if it's on or not.
Yes.
I thought it'd be better to be two months, my client's optimistic, they can make changes.
Please do me a favor. You have another case that you adjourned for two months to next month. Can we make this for two months? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Because remember, your case is adjourned to.
Oh, I know that.
Okay.
Believe me, I know.
I want to see what.
My client doesn't.
Okay.
Fortunately, you're stuck with me.
Well, no, I don't mind that.
Maybe Diane will come back.
So this case or the other case?
No, no.
So everybody in the audience, so you know, this case, what's the date of December? What's the date of December?
I think it's the 6th. J-6th?
December 5th.
December 5th. This case is being adjourned to December 5th, 2024. There will be no further notices, either in the newspaper or by mail. The only way you get a notice is if he increases the amount of units. If it decreases, you don't get no notice. So I'm letting you know, if he's want to participate in this, come back on December 5th, you said?
Yes.
December 5th, okay? What, will there be, if you, if you reduce, if you modify the plan and reduce the number of units? If, will there be an opportunity for the members of the public to look at those plans?
They have to be submitted.
They have to be submitted 10 days before the meeting, otherwise we can't have. I just wanted the public to know that if they wanted to see revised plans, if any, they'll be available. They will be available 10 days before the meeting in, in, Miss Chickily, on the third floor. Of Chickarelli, on the third floor of the town building here. Does everybody understand?
Yes.
I want to make sure everybody understands in the audience, okay?
Third floor code enforcement.
All right, in the code enforcement. The plans will be available 10 days before the meeting, which technically would be around the 25th of November. Do we need extension of time or are we? Okay. And he's asked.
I consent to the adjournment. I consent to the extension of time. To the December 5th.
Right. Okay. All right, everybody? So that's the end of it tonight. You can get the fucking planner off. He looks good though.
Thank you, everybody, for coming to see me.
Last case on the agenda. Somebody here for 175 hornblower?
Yes.
You are, okay. You can talk like that, everybody, take a breath.
My sister. She thought we were out. Taking out somewhere weird. No, we're just at a meeting. Chrissy told us we're like out in the west side.
Pro business, what it is. And it does drive our.
Let's go.
I know, very, very lively.
Okay, next case on the agenda. Now that we cleared out most of the room.
Publication, we're good.
Uh, next case on the agenda is ZV 202407, 175 Hornblower Avenue LLC. Applicant is seeking to construct a second-story addition to an existing detached garage to create an additional one-bedroom dwelling unit, which is current, and the building is currently used as a two-family. The building's there, okay?
Is there, is there an issue?
No, no, no. Hope the, hope the owner is proper. I need to know.
Yes, we are.
You know him?
Yeah, so, uh, board members, I respectfully recuse myself of this, um, case.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No worries.
He don't want to go home, no way.
Oh, by the way, before you go.
Yes.
Did, uh, did we get confirmation on any of your rules?
Well, yes, you guys are all saying I need to drop the calendar and send it out. But, uh, I need to know if you have your confirmation through email and you're going to get into the convention yet.
That I have, but I, I can't print out the thing. Can you print it out for me?
No, I can't print out anything. Ever since this new change, I cannot do anything. It goes by record to your emails.
It went to me, but I can't print it out.
I can't print it out from your email.
It won't print out for some reason. Can we get Ms. Powlen?
Can you get them?
No, I mean, hold them ahead of time. I'm telling them I just can't print it out.
I can't do anything.
No, I mean, I can hold. Yes, thank you. If it'll print on your printer, I'm mine, it won't print.
I have no access to any of this. Well, this is changed.
I'll pull you a kind of a little bit, alright? And then if you print, put mine on, I'll send it to you.
Sorry, I'm having a
Okay, so, you're good with this case still?
I am.
Two timers, oh my god.
I figured if I was coming here, I might as well take more than one. Particularly if you were the first one, I assume it would be returned before it was over.
Double knee replacement.
That's fine.
Two at one time.
Shall I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Chairman, members, as you know, my name is Robert Gassillon, the firm is Gassillon and Matko. I represent the applicant in this matter, Giovanni Magno. My client is the owner of 175 Hornblower. It's an application seeking preliminary and major final site plan approval with a use variance and bulk variances. My client is seeking to add a second-story four-carriage house to a three-car garage. The carriage house would have approximately 600 square feet and one bedroom and would not expand above the square footage of the building, directly up. The property is in a single-family zone and the proposed carriage house, together with the existing two-family, are not permitted. The lot is very deep and, but it has insufficient width in that the lot is 40 by about 150 or 60. There are a number of bulk variances, but all are pre-existing as the proposal does not change the footprint at all. The witnesses you'll hear from are Giovanni Magno, who is the applicant, and Anthony Marucci, who is the engineer and planner. Unfortunately, the architect couldn't make it and I handed the pla, I don't think he's necessary to this case. I handed the plan to Anthony. He's looking at it. We're only adding a unit above the garage. I'd like to call my first witness, Giovanni Magno.
If you could raise your right hand, please, sir. Thank you. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony or about to give show me the truth?
I do.
Thank you. State your name and spell your last name, please.
Giovanni Magno, M-A-G-N-O.
Thank you.
Mr. Magno, what's your business address?
Business address?
Yes.
Um, Tabor Chirling, Fairfield, New Jersey.
And what is your occupation?
I own an insurance agency and I'm a real estate investor.
Are you also the owner of the property on Hornblower, question 175?
I am, yes.
And how long have you owned that property?
Since December of 2022.
And what is on that property?
A two-family home.
And is there also a three-car garage in the rear?
There is.
And what is it you are seeking to do? Would you explain to the board what this application is about?
To get a one-bedroom apartment above an existing three-car garage.
And that apartment is a carriage house of about 600 square feet?
Yes.
And it would have one bedroom?
Correct.
And you're seeking what kind of tenant to live in that unit?
Preferably a single tenant.
I have no further questions in this question.
Any questions by members of the board? So you have a, go ahead, you go, okay.
Question.
Yes.
When you bought the property?
Yes.
What's your thing?
Uh, when I bought the property, I spoke to the original owner and he had mentioned that his father built the house. And at one time, it was a three-family. So I didn't really believe him. So I went to the town, checked the tax records, and in fact, at one point, it was listed as a three-family on the tax records, so.
When was the third unit?
When or where?
Where.
Where? To be honest, I'm not sure. There is, um, there is two floors plus an attic, so.
Okay, let me just explain. There's an extensive history that Mr. Marucci spent a lot of time developing. And he can go through the entire history of this property. That might be helpful.
Yeah, I, 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 I would. My question is, why would you make that separate from another?
Right, uh, valid question. And I think there was hesitation.
Oh, yes, how?
There was hesitation in the beginning and then I ended up deciding to, you know, pursue the after effect.
That part.
It's an honest answer.
Question.
Yes.
Question. You said it's an attic?
Uh, well, a third floor, I don't know.
Is there anybody living there?
So currently, there's two tenants, the first-floor tenant and then the second-floor tenant, um, occupy the second and third floor.
So there's three floors.
Correct.
It's a one-family zone, though.
Uh.
Yes, it is.
Any other questions by members of the board? No, okay. Any questions by members of the public on the testimony given? Yes, come on up.
Again, everyone, Michael Shelton, 47. Question for the applicant. Did I hear you correctly? You acquired this property in December of 2022?
Yes.
Alright. According to the Essex County deed registers office and other online sites, they indicate that you actually acquired the property on December 22nd, 2023.
Well, who cares? You acquired it, whether it was 22 or 23, nothing changes with the facts. Let's put it that way.
Testimony's given under oath, right? So you're supposed to
Well, maybe not the year.
I could be, I could be mistaken.
You could be mistaken. So it could be 23. It's not, it's not a serious blunder, let's put it that way. We'll go with the record. The record says 23. We'll go with 23.
You can check it if you would like on your own.
No, 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 it's okay. It's okay because it's not something that would have an effect on the application, I don't think.
You have an honest face. So we'll go with 23.
Just wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page here, that he's been the owner of the property for about nine to 10 months and not almost two years. So, just, I just want to make sure that we
Well, he should know that. He should know that himself.
Okay, alright. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Can I speak? I'm also one of the other.
Whoa, 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 whoa. How many owners we have?
No, no, I just want to say when it was actually purchased, what's going on.
Who's the owner? You or him?
Is it LLC?
So he's a partner in the corporation, yes. So he can bring him up to testify once. That's no problem. You can bring him up, Mr. Gassillon, if you want him to testify.
It's just the same issue when, when the deed was recorded. It happened, he's going to testify the deed was recorded in, in January 23, recorded. That doesn't tag you in the exact date it was purchased.
That's true.
But it was, it was obviously, it was purchased earlier in 20, it would seem it was purchased earlier in 23 if the date of recording is 17-23.
Alright, I agree with you and Mr. Shelton brought up the issue, but I don't think it has a, 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 an effect on the application.
I agree.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Any other questions of the applicant? Well, no. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Frantoni.
Yes, Mr. Frantoni, 129 Mount Prospect. You stated that this attic is being used.
The second and third floor being, I want that to be true.
I want that. Are there any, you told me up there, such as a kitchen, bathroom?
The third floor has a bathroom, not a kitchen.
And it's the same family using it?
Correct.
The second and third floor.
Who'd mind me asking? How much rent are you charging?
How much rent? Uh, the first floor is $2,200 and the second and third floor is $3,300.
Any other questions, please?
Uh, I have none. As a member of the public, can I have any more questions? No, you can call your next witness.
Mr. Marucci.
Make sure you give your extended information, Mr. Marucci. We and Mr. Ball. Anthony, if you could raise your right hand, please.
Sure.
Now, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony or about to give show me the truth?
I do.
Want to state your name and spell your last name, please.
Anthony Marucci, M-A-R-U-C-C-I.
And he's testifying as well, Mr. Gassillon.
He's testifying, both an engineer and a planner. He's been here numerous times. I'm having to qualify.
And as long as your, your license is still in effect, I have no problem.
My licenses are all current.
That's all I need to know.
Thanks.
Mr. Marucci, can you please review the property in question?
My site plan is on the board there and, um, the property is 175 Hornblower Avenue, block 6904, lot 25. If I may, Mr. Igo, that's the same plan that the board has.
But it's colored in the upper right-hand corner.
I, I color-coded it for a reason, um, but it's the same thing that the board has.
See, what, what it is?
Yeah, it won't work if it's colored. It's modern, probably.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah.
The zone is RA1, as was explained, already a single-family zone, but it's currently occupied as a two-family dwelling. The property is 40 feet wide and the depth on the northernly side is 172.56 feet and on the southerly side is 174.47 feet. It has a total lot area of 6,940.8 square feet. The existing dwelling that fronts on Hornblower is a two-and-a-half-story dwelling. The driveway is on the southerly side of the, of the dwelling and it leads, um, it's actually not even paved right now. It's just a, a, uh, blank driveway. It had, it had a couple of concrete strips. It's just a blank driveway right now. And it leads to an existing three-car garage that's in the rear of the property.
Can you review the surrounding properties?
Yes, the, um, I, the reason I color-coded the 200-foot radius map, our property, obviously, I highlighted in orange color. Then I went back and forth with the colors. Everything that's, um, highlighted in color are two-family dwellings. So this shows that the, within the block, there are a number of two-family dwellings existing. There are five two-families to the south of, of the subject property. There are two, two families on Holmes by DeWitt, as you can see on the, on the map. There are two, two families fronting on Rosnour and one is across the street from the subject property on, on Hornblower. So those are all two families. The dwelling was actually constructed as a two-family in 1922. And the reason I know that is because I obtained the actual permit for this.
Just for one second, just if you could explain clearly to the board what the application is for before you get into that history.
Would you mind if I sit? It's a little difficult.
No, you could sit. And Mr. Gassillon, we already know what the application is, so just let him form.
Okay, if you're satisfied, you know what it is.
Yes, I already know what it is. I even went to the site.
I appreciate you letting me sit.
You're welcome.
So go ahead with the history of the property that you
Well, let me, let me just explain. The application, as the, as the owner mentioned, is to
Put an apartment on top of the existing three-car garage.
On top of the garage.
Thank you.
The dwelling was a, was actually constructed as a two-family, like I said, in 1922. And I have the permit from the, from the township records. I'd like to place into
This is A2.
The permit was granted on March 8th, 1922. So it was, it was constructed as a two-family before zoning, basically. In 1940, according to township records, these are from the tax assessor's office, it is listed as a three-family. And that record comes right from the assessor's office.
A3.
From 1955 to 1962, it was basically converted back to a two-family with commercial.
When was it converted?
1955 through 1962, according to the assessor's record, it was a two-family plus commercial.
It gets A42.
Yes.
In the 1970s, according to the tax records, it was a two-family.
A5.
So when was the last time it was a three-family?
One, one, one more. In 1984, according to the tax records, it's being used as a three-family.
1984, according to tax records?
Yes.
Not, not colored.
Over here, I have use and it says here, 1984, 1995, it says a two-family.
Well, I, I just gave you the last one, uh, that says 1984, three-family.
A two-family.
Three-family in 1984.
E4 in the tax record showed three.
Then why is it saying on here two?
Well, Anthony just gave you one that says three, 1984.
Now, currently, it is used as a two-family.
Now, let me ask you one other question. And this is a big question.
Sure.
Was it ever legally a three?
No.
Yeah.
Legally, I don't care about tax records. I'm talking about, do you have anything else from the construction department that made it a three?
Right.
You see this? It said 22 or two.
Taxes means nothing.
Tax records mean nothing to us. All that means is got picked up as that. Doesn't mean that it was legally that.
Right.
We've gone through this a thousand times. And only, the only time it's a legal two-family is when the construction depart, a three-family, is when the construction department said it.
I don't agree with you, sir. I, because this predates the zoning ordinance.
And you hear from the Royal Act okay?
I'm sorry?
And you hear from the Royal Act okay?
No, 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 you misunderstand.
He says
No, 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 you misunderstand. I'll tell you why you misunderstand. I've been over whether it's a legal two or not. We don't care. He's now looking to make it a three.
Right, but my point, he says it's a three-family, you're not?
I'm not, this is not a certification. I don't have the proof for a certification. If I did, I would have presented it as a certification. It's yours of errors. But what I'm saying to you, Chair, Mr. The chairman asked if it was ever a legal three. It wasn't, it had to be legal. Listen, please listen. If in 1940, before the records,
Right.
it was used as a three, it was a legal three. That is absolute. Did it continue? No. Therefore, I can't. But the que, the answer to the question, no. Now, the answer to the question, it was a legal three.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
I'm going to tell you why I'm interrupting, Paul. What's before us tonight is not the existing What's before us tonight is not the existing building. It's that they're looking to put a new third apartment on top of the three-car garage in the rear, which has never happened and it needs a use variance.
That's correct.
Am I correct?
And I'm not saying anything but that. But the fact that it was a legal three at one time is, I think, a fact that it should be considered as...
No, it doesn't, only in the existing building. And only, only if it was a legal three. And it was stayed a legal three. Once it's no longer a legal three, it's dead.
I don't disagree.
Well, then, don't argue, then it's a factor.
It absolutely is a factor.
It's no factor.
If I may, it comes into the planning because there were times that it was used as a three-family and I'm gonna use those arguments.
The existing building.
That's correct, the existing building.
Now, he's not asking to change the existing building back to a three-family, is he?
I, I bring this up because it's part of my planning testimony. We are asking for a D1 use variance for the third unit over the garage and if you will allow me, I'll get into my testimony. But I'm bringing, I'm bringing, but I had to bring in the, the past history of the property.
Well, no, I, I didn't mind the past history of the property. But the thing is, it's, I don't know how long it's been, or maybe it's since 84, whatever it is that was on the paper I just saw, it's been illegal to the building. This is a totally different thing because you wanna put an apartment in the back on top of the garage where it never was an apartment.
Again, I'll let Anthony talk, but I say, well, I don't agree with that. This is a piece of property that's 40 by 175 that was used various ways and that should be a factor that the board seriously considers when determining whether or not this variance should be granted.
Not if you do an additional, not if you do an additional, additional construction.
I don't agree. I don't agree, that's not our, that's not our case. And did you look at the site?
Yes, I was there.
Did you see the top of that garage?
Yeah.
It looks like there's a unit there now.
We went in and looked and there's no steps going up, there is no unit.
I said, it looks like.
That's a fake, that's a fake window that's there.
I understand, I said, it looks like, I didn't say it was.
Could I recommend, could I recommend that, Mr. Marucci?
We let Anthony talk.
Go crazy. Let us hear your testimony as to the use, I think the board has a good handle whether or not it was a two or a three. Clearly, at one point, it's been used for multiple uses over the years, including a short stint as a commercial. And if the board, when the board discusses this, I assume, we can't ignore the fact, put aside legality, not legal, it's been used for multiple, multiple uses.
Okay, it was only to bring out the prior history, so if I may continue, thank you.
Finish.
Yeah.
We're not here to determine what's legal.
The proposal this evening is to construct a carriage house, one bedroom, over the existing three-car garage and to extend the driveway to the garage to accommodate parking for all the, the units. In my opinion, the site is particularly suitable for the carriage house. It's an oversized property, the zone is 5,000 square feet, we have just under 7,000, 6,940.8 square feet. There's no expansion of the footprint, it's going above. Because you're going up, because we're, uh, constructing it over the garage. Again, there's a history of three-family use based on the assessor's records. The town recognizes the need for senior citizen housing as stated in the latest master plan reexamination report that was adopted on March 8th, 2021. Third units were recommended in the RB and in the RC zones where third units cannot be more than one bedroom. Again, this is for history. The recommendation from the master plan was incorporated into the current ordinance. Section 23 point, I'm sorry, section 23 dash 8.1, three-family dwellings. 8.1B permits a second or third residential unit over a detached garage as a freestanding house provided the principal lot is greater than 7,000 square feet. We are at 99% of that. Section 23 dash 18.3, under accessory buildings, a detached two-car garage on lots greater than 7,500 square feet in the RB and RC zones are permitted a second story with a maximum height of 24 feet. In my opinion, there are several purposes of the municipal land use law that are promoted. A, to general welfare, there's a need for housing. That's, that's in the municipal land use law and it's also in your master plan. Purpose B, to promote adequate light air and open space by not expanding the footprint, we, I believe, we're provo, promoting light air and open space. Purpose C of the municipal land use law, we're promoting the establishment of appropriate population densities that contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and the preservation of the environment. Again, there's the history that this property did accommodate three units in the past. Purpose I of the municipal land use law is to promote a desirable visual environment. Again, by not expanding the footprint, we're keeping it light and air and open space that provides a, a desirable visual environment at the same time. Purpose L of the municipal land use law is to encourage senior citizen housing construction and accessory apartments and again, that's what was expressed in the, uh, reexamination report of the master plan. In addition to that, we're providing enough parking, we're not asking for a parking variance. The way it's designed, you have a three-car garage, three spaces in front of it, so there's access for each unit to have parking and so we have enough adequate parking. Under the negative criteria, in my opinion, there's no substantial detriment to the public good. The proposed apartment is a one-bedroom, it's less than 600 square feet. Again, the prior history that this site accommodated three units in the past and it can accommodate three units with the carriage house. Under the second prong of the negative criteria, there's no substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. As I showed in, in the 200-foot radius, there are multiple fam, multiple family uses existing within the surrounding area. There's a history of the third dwelling unit, of the third, uh, dwelling unit, the third unit. The town recognizes the need for accessory dwelling units. The, if you look at the zone map, I'd like to enter that as evidence also. Where the property is situated, where the property is situated, we're surrounded by the RB zone to the north of us, to the east of us, and to the south of us. And why the town left this in, in the RA1 is beyond me because there, there is evidence of multi-families in the area and, and again, the RB zone seems to surround us. So between the master plan, encouraging more housing, senior housing, the municipal land use law, again, also encouraging municipal housing, the history of three units on this site, I, I think the, uh, the site...
Can you hold off? Because one of our members just left the room, so hold off on the, on the...
Sure.
It's gonna go away, you don't have seven members. I don't want us to have seven members. We'll have a recess for five minutes while we wait for our member to come back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I assume you want seven members of all of us.
I do.
Thank you.
I didn't realize you even bought that.
Well, I caught it. Earlier, I didn't catch her coming in, but I caught it going in. Mr. Ben, is this actually a consent?
That's double check.
You messing with me? We have an RC zone here.
You're a buster, you know that?
Huh?
You're a buster, you know that?
A what?
A buster.
A buster.
Because you said there's no more RC zone.
There's no more parking zone.
Is it RC? Yes, sir.
And that is RC.
And does RC exist? Yes, sir.
Yes.
You told me that earlier enough.
There's no more parking zone. No more multifamily zones, no more multifamily zones. Outside of 1-2s and 3s.
What is in the RC zone?
1, 2, 3.
That's it?
That's it.
No more than 1, 2, 3. All right, Mr. Filano's back, we can proceed, you can continue your testimony. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Have a good time.
I believe the way I was ending was that, uh, I believe that we can comply with both the positive and negative criteria. Again, there's a history that this was used as a three-family. Yes, it was in the existing house, now the existing house is a two, but the carriage house won't have any effect on the, on the zone plan and, uh, I believe that the, the D1 use variance can be granted. The C variances, um, one of the C variances is lock coverage, the lock coverage has to deal with the driveway. And whether they, the, this application was before the board or not, the driveway needs to be extended to the garage in order to, uh, in order to get access to garage, so...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but did you ever go to this site?
Yes.
Then explain to me, how come when me and Mr. Suriel went to the site, the driveway went all the way back to the garage? And you're telling us it's not?
It's not paved, is what he said.
It's not paved, I mean, I think it's still, it's still driveway.
He didn't say it didn't go back, he said it's not paved.
All I'm saying is that, all I'm saying is, all I'm saying is the impervious, all I'm saying is the impervious coverage variance has to do with the driveway, not with the addition at all, just with the driveway. He paved the driveway, that's where the variance comes in on the impervious coverage. The carriage house has nothing to do with the impervious coverage variance, that's my, my testimony.
That's true. And on this paper that you gave us as evidence, that's marked A7, I assume the red dot between the RA and the 1 is the property involved.
That's the subject property.
That's the subject property, okay. So it's in the middle of the one-family zone?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes. If I just can continue, I did, um...
Now, let me ask you one other question, based on your testimony. In this area, you kept on mentioning there's two families here and there's two families there and there's two families around. You never mentioned one families, I don't believe. And, and I don't remember you mentioning any three families.
There are no three families in the 200-foot radius, but there are two families.
Are there one families also?
Of course there are.
I'm, I don't know, you can tell me.
Well, but that's why I highlighted the two families and again, I didn't just make it up, that came right from the tax assessor's records.
But there is no threes?
No, sir.
Okay.
That's why we're asking for the D1 use variance. I, I, um, I did review Mr. Harris' report and we can comply with, uh, with Mr. Harris' recommends that, um, is, should the board approve the application? Obviously, we'll replace the sidewalks along the frontage on Hornblower. Because of the impervious coverage for the driveway, we would supply a grading plan and a stormwater management plan and, uh, any other, uh, conditions that would be imposed by either Mr. Harris or the board. That's all I have.
Any questions by members of the board?
Mr....
Come on, you would you?
Thank you. The diagram does not show any heating or hot water units?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The diagram doesn't show any heating or hot water for the back apartment. Unless I don't understand the drawing. I was just wondering where it would be.
Is there an HVAC system in there that you're asking for?
Well, I, I didn't do the architect plan, I'm only just looking at it now, but obviously, there has to be heat and air conditioning, um, um, for the apartment.
Given that we are shinkies, if we get the approval, we will have heat and air conditioning.
I just didn't know where it would be located.
We had to bid fortune, the architect not being able to make it.
If I may also, um, any utilities that are required, like water and sewer, will come from the house and connect to the, to the garage.
So they won't be installed in the, in one of the garages then?
I'm sorry?
They would not be installed in one of the garages then?
No.
So they would have to run under, on the, on the ground lines?
Yes.
You also mentioned about, uh, light and air circulation. Wouldn't the little over 22-foot-high garage impact the property behind it?
Well, the, the, the garage is in the, in the rear and it, it backs up to the rear of the property's on the width, so it doesn't really affect the, uh, the property. First of all, the, the existing garage is, is like a garage and a half in height already, so the ex, the additional height doesn't affect air, light and, and, and open space to either our property or to the adjacent properties, in my opinion.
Garage has a full window right now and it looks like it's almost a full area above.
It looks like a regular window. And even has Venetian blinds.
I didn't see that, I mean, I know it's a full window, but...
But it's, it's, it's...
But it's a fade. Much, it's sure it's a fade. If you've been there, you saw the structure is in existence. We're not changing very much.
There's, there's no stairway to go upstairs.
No, it's not used, it's not used, but it's there, the structure's there.
It's a fault, it's never happened.
I just have one other comment. If the application is approved, a garage and parking spot behind it must be assigned to each apartment. If I don't have a car, I still have that spot.
There'd be two spaces assigned to each, be a park.
I'm sorry?
Space, the garage space and the space behind it. They'd each have, it'd be six parking spaces.
Right.
Yes, I'm saying each unit must be assigned.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
That's all.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Maybe I missed it, lovely. In the event of a fire, is there a fire escape or how do they get out?
Well, the, on the arch, well, you can see it on our plan too, the staircase is on the outside. It's only, it's only a, a second story, so it's not, um, it doesn't need a fire escape.
I just didn't know, like, how to get out.
It doesn't need, who means a degress, actually.
I have a question. Uh, we keep talking about the height of the existing garage, what is the height of the existing garage?
Okay, so I'm not the architect, let me see if I, if I have the existing garage. Well, sorry, the detail, I think, well, let me see. It's, well, it's got a peak roof on it, um...
I think, I think...
Are you talking about the second level?
The existing garage, what's the height of it?
That's all.
I would take 20 feet. You got plans? Only if you propose, I don't have a use.
Yeah, it doesn't show anything with the existing. We had a question before about whether it would impact the neighborhood behind it or whatever. But if it's already almost that high, it wouldn't be that big of an impact, but we don't know how high it is.
But that was the question that Mr. Marucci asked me before, where I said it wouldn't, it doesn't affect light air and open space because of the location.
I understand that, I'm just wondering what the actual height of it is now, though, that's all. I understand that, I'm just wondering what the actual height of it is now, though, that's all.
It, from what I saw, it's like a garage and a half, it's like a half a story, that's the way I would look at it, right now.
Tom, isn't that new report, the height of the, of proposed height?
The proposed height is here.
Twenty-two point four, yes.
Yeah, 22, 22.4.
I'm looking at a plan that shows eight feet, eight feet, and to the peak, another five feet. So you're talking 21 feet.
Correct.
And you should have that plan. 21 feet total.
So you're saying there's going to be an attic over the unit?
I'm sorry?
You said eight, eight and five.
Eight, eight, five is the plan. I don't think the existing, I think it's an existing plan, but eight, eight. Maybe a little more.
Maybe a little more, but it's in the garage itself. Because we looked up, and it was higher than eight.
I'm sorry, 22, four is the total. 22, four is the total to the... And again, you should have a set of plans, that's what I'm saying.
There won't be, there won't be an attic on top of it.
You know what that means, Chris?
I haven't, but I said there won't be an attic, it's determined that there's no...
No, it's not that I'm... What I missed when I came up with the eight feet, it's eight, then a foot in between the two floors, then eight, and then 5.4 for a total of 22,4, total.
That's the proposed.
That's the proposed building. Again, I think Jerry and I probably agree the existing is probably about 19 or 20.
All the way to the top right now?
Right now.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
So you're dealing with another two or three feet higher, and the existing is felled a little bit.
But there's no, there's no access to the top.
Oh, I understand, I'm just saying the building, the structure is there.
I was looking, I said, there's going to be an access, so there wasn't. We looked, running thoroughly in the garage. The garage was open, so we went right in.
Yeah, it was open when I was there, too. I wasn't nervy enough to go in.
Well, I had a lot of nerve.
I know you're nervous. All right, anything further for Mr. Marucci?
Not that I have, unless, one of the, you want to ask questions? One quick question.
Can I ask one question?
Okay.
Are cars going to park under, they're going to park underneath garage?
They'll be allowed to.
They'll be allowed to.
Each unit would be, um, assigned a garage and a parking space in front of it. This way there's no argument, you know, the addition of parking.
And let's say there's a fire, they jump out the window 20 feet. Let's say they can't get down the stairs, they just jump out the window 20 feet in case there's a fire.
Well, I'm sorry when you say jump out the window, it's no different than a single-family home.
Well, how do they get downstairs, though?
I'm sorry?
Like, how do they get out safely, is what I'm asking.
What she's saying is, how does she get out?
Above that garage, how do they get out safely?
It's no different than a single-family home, if you're on the second floor, it's no different. I mean, I mean, if the board approves this, this has to go through the construction office, and whether the building needs to be sprayed for it or anything like that, I don't know. I mean, that could be part of the construction.
I just, I think cars parking underneath, there's gasoline, and the cars just...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Like, I'm just thinking, like, there's cars parking underneath, like, a single-family home.
There's still the same garage access to get out. And if it's, if it's parked, cars parked underneath, there'll be certain code requirements to protect above.
It has to be there.
And many two-family houses are cars parked underneath, many. You got one driveway, and then cars underneath, one or two inside. Not out of the ordinary to have cars below a residence.
But usually, in a two-family, you have two means of egress. Usually.
This, this is not a two-family, it's one unit, it's one unit in the park.
I have two means of egress in a one-family. Actually, if I go through the garage, it's three means of egress. And I have a one-family.
Obviously Anthony knows the construction law.
No, I understand.
It has to meet the code, no matter what, and we sit here, it has to meet the code.
It has to meet the code, that's required, no matter what. Okay. Uh, Mr. Sheldon, you have any questions?
You can take that, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. During Mr. Marucci's testimony, several times he made reference to the RB and RC zones, which are multifamily residential zones. And I wasn't really quite following his logic as to what relevance that has to this project, which is in the RA zone. So I was just going to ask him if he could clarify, is he trying to, to, I don't have the whole zoning chapter in front of me, are carriage houses permitted in the RB and RC zones? If it's that reason, there should be some extension to the RA zone? I just wanted him to, if he could succinctly re-explain why he was introducing allowed uses in the RBs, the RC zones, and why that should have any relevance to this particular case, this particular property being situated in the RA zone. So, if he could just...
Sure, the relevance is the fact that the town recognized the need, again, going back to the master plan, the examination report, the, the, the planning board and the governing body recognized the need for housing, and they created the special situation in the RB zone to allow these carriage houses. Yes, we're not in the RB zone, but we do meet certain criteria. First of all, again, going back to the history here, the prior history, that this was a three-family house at one time. And, and the fact that the municipal land use law encourages housing with accessory apartments. So the fact that the town recognizes, yes, they put it into the RB and RZ zone, but in our particular case, and this is a unique situation, we're not, I'm not looking at this as to do this everywhere, but we're unique in the sense that we have the lot area. We have 99% of the 7,000 square feet that would be required in the RB zone. We already have the garage there, so these are facts that support the carriage house. I agree, I mean, we're not in the RB zone, but we have certain criteria that kind of meets that RB zone. The lot area.
You're not in it.
The garage, it's there already.
But you're not in it, right? It's not a lot where you are right now.
That's why we're here, that's why we're asking for the D1 variance, or else we wouldn't be here, Anthony.
As the cliche goes, unless it's horseshoes or amber dates, you know, coast may not be enough, according to the municipal land use law. But the fact of the matter is that in the RA's, um, carriage houses are still strictly off limits. You can't, you can't get, you can't put such a structure in place without a variance.
That's correct.
Well, we understand it, that's what he just answered.
That's why we... Mr. Filano's question, we're here because we know we need a variance. Anthony's gone through a whole litany of reasons why he thinks it should be granted. The board, they accept that or reject it. I will obviously sum up as to that.
Mr. Phil, all right. I might ask you a question first. The lots adjoining this property, what are they being used as, do you know?
The lot to the south of us is a two-family.
The one right next to it?
Yes.
What about the one on the north side?
One-family.
So you have one family, a two-family where you are, and a two-family next to you on the left?
Correct.
And they all have garages in the back, don't they?
I believe they do.
Mr. Frantoni?
Yes, I have one question. Mr. Marucci testified that at times in the history of this building, it was used as a three-family.
At one time.
Right. I'd be interested in, where was the third apartment?
It was where the attic is now.
That's right.
And if it was a third apartment, then it must have had a kitchen and a bathroom.
It has a bathroom, but no kitchen anymore. And it's used by the person on the second floor. That's already been testified to.
That's my point, but at one time, supposedly it did have...
Well, don't have it now, that's all we care about.
That can easily be converted back to, it'll become a fourth-unit property. So...
I doubt that.
Anything else? Any other witnesses?
I do not. I'd like to have an opportunity to sum up.
Sum up.
I do have a question. Sorry. Do we go over the screening of the utilities, the refuge, and any of the facade materials? That was in my...
Siding materials.
Siding materials. Because I didn't notice, from what I saw, it looked like it's a CMU. In the plan. And I did ask if you kind of had a little bit of, cleaned it up a little bit. Either stucco along that side where the six...
Well, we're certainly, uh, indicate what we're planning on doing.
Decorative garage doors or better materials?
I'm looking at the architect's elevation views, and it just shows siding, it doesn't state what kind of siding for the carriage house. With respect, again, with respect to utilities, as I testified, that the water and sewer lines will be connected to the main house, you don't have to have...
I'm talking about HVAC systems and everyone's air conditioner condensers that have to be screened or kept away from robbery lines.
Can we have the, Anthony's out of the spot here, he did not do the architectural plan. Could I have the owner testify and answer your question?
If I may, I believe, I believe the ductwork for the AC and the heating would be up in the, what's called the attic, the, the, above, you know, the crawl space above the unit. And the air conditioning condenser would be behind the staircase, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be seen.
Right, okay. Garbage cans, where do you keep them?
I didn't see any garbage cans when I was there, to be honest.
Well, I mean, how is the garbage handled now, sir?
Uh, there's a back sidewalk in the back of the house, and they keep their trash cans in the back by the condensers. Uh, but going back to the air for the back apartment, I was in talks with the contractor to discuss what the possibilities were, because the apartment's so small, we're thinking of doing like a ductless unit. So there would actually be no condenser outside, if that's...
There'd be a unit out there, though.
Yeah, small condenser.
I'm just, like I said, I was worried about placement and screening, that's just about it. And I like to keep it, it's about noise nuisances, you know, for the neighborhood.
With respect to refuse and recycling, I would have that behind the existing dwelling, and I would have it screened also. Again, we're talking at most three units.
Yeah, as we get more and more garbage, because that's, that is 1-2, 1-2, 1-2, recycling and garbage, recycling and garbage. It starts to get crazy and cluttered, and then they start falling all over, and...
It would be screened behind the house.
Okay. And as for the facade materials, the corniceau, a little bit of decorative features to the actual building, is that...
I'm going to defer to the client, it's his house, and I'm sure he'll agree to that.
Yeah, with, with preference, I'm not against it. We had a similar situation in a different town. We were going to decide, and they want the stucco and something a little bit more decorative. So I'm not against it.
Mr. Body, would you object to reviewing whatever the siding is going to be with the zoning office prior to you installing it, should this application be approved?
Sure.
Yeah, siding, the garage doors, the decorative features along the inch.
Again, would you agree to that?
Yes. Yes. Come on up, ask a question, yeah? Who do you want to ask a question of? You want to give testimony, what do you want to know?
I just want a question, is only one entrance to this building?
Yes.
Is there going to be a fire escape on the inside?
No.
Is that required, or no?
No.
They will do, they will do whatever is required by the UCC code, correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions? Anybody else? Want to sum up?
I do, thank you. Mr. Chairman of the board, obviously there's been development in this town, and this is a perfect place for development. It's a great spot in a small unit for which there is a need. Light, air, plenty of space, plenty of grass, plenty of land. It has 99% of the square foot is necessary for a carriage house. Not in this zone, but in other zones where the town has seen fit to allow carriage houses. There's no footprint expansion whatsoever, we're going above an existing three-car garage. And when I first went to look, I said to my client, did you illegally put something up there? There's no way, that's the way it is. I thought the thing was almost in existence. And if any of you, and I expect most of you have been there, you can see that. There's no dramatic change going to occur if this approval is granted. Now, Anthony went through a tremendous history of this property. Obviously, it is a non-typical one or two-family home. And the chairman and I disagree, but if in 1940, this was a three-family, it is a legal three-family at that time, they may have abandoned that use. Therefore, I can't go forward with the proof that it's a pre-existing, non-conforming use, but certainly, it makes it very appropriate for a variance. The house was constructed back in 1922. You certainly need some dressing up and some improvement to this property. It's more than 100 years old. My client is going to take care of this property. If he puts this in, he's going to pave the driveway. Now, you could say, oh, impervious area, but it's going to look a heck of a lot nicer and a better addition to the community. And that's paved in grace. And then he's going to make the house look better by putting proper siding on the garage. Now, Anthony gave the history, I won't repeat it, but as late as 84, who was being taxed as a three-family, yes, tax records are not the legal records, but that's the way it was used. And it was in 1940, a three-family, and therefore was legal at that time. Now, we talk about parking being a crucial issue in this town. Here we got six spaces, two assigned to each unit. And once we pave it, it's going to be terrific for everybody there. The bulk variance is all pre-existing. The lot coverage will be created by, a lot coverage issue will be created by the driveway. But isn't that better than leaving it the way it is? Anthony points out, it's in the middle of the one-family zone, all around it are two-family zones. And we're able to comply with Mr. Harris' report, and we are happy to make it subject to review by Brian's office with regard to any of the aesthetics of the building or anything there too, whether it's the siding, whether it's the garage doors, whatever it may be. And again, there are cases where you could say, this, what is the detriment to allowing this? There's nothing but a benefit. You're going to get that. Property improved, the looks of the property improved, you're going to get a paved driveway, you're going to add a unit that could be needed, a one-bedroom unit for which there is a great demand. And we're not talking about the house, the apartment complex that I talked about that I don't like on Courtland and Girolla Street. It's ridiculous, we're talking about something that's attractive in the neighborhood that fits in and not adding to the structure. And I thank the board for the time and consideration they give to all the applications.
All right, gentlemen, now we're open to discussion. Based on testimony, and going to look at the property, I'm going to give you my opinion first, anybody else can jump in, I don't care.
Can the public go up with testimony first, or...
What, you want to give testimony?
Yeah, just very quickly, just...
Oh, I, I object to that, I thought everybody was done, I gave a summation. I want the, I'll have to have the opportunity to sum up again, if that's okay?
If you want.
I, okay.
I don't mind. I mean, is it really necessary?
Only, just be 45 seconds, and then you guys can do what you want.
Swearman?
All right, and I will do it, thank you.
Are you going to testify?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth?
I do.
And that's Michael Sheldon, okay.
Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. If memory serves me correctly, at some point within the last 18 months, this board, the zoning board, heard a very similar application.
Objection, that's not relevant.
It isn't.
This is testimony.
It's not relevant. Not relevant testimony. Every application is individual.
Right. I was going to say, if you just...
Objection, it's not relevant what they heard last night or what they decided.
You've got to remember something. It was in a different zone. I know what you're talking about.
That's what I was going to ask.
It was in a different zone, there was no frontage. It was a totally different situation. So you know what? It doesn't apply.
Thank you, that's all I was going to ask, if you remembered the details of that.
I remember everything, and it doesn't apply to this case.
It was comparable, it was the same, I didn't...
It's not comparable, it's not nothing.
Your application, I was going to say that if the board approved something similar very recently, then your case is... Your case is for your hands.
Thank you.
All right, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Sheldon, does your testimony...
For once, you don't have to, you actually won't shake my hand and thank you for, for the help. That's it, that's all I wanted to say tonight, all right?
Totally different situation.
Precedent, starting to size this, and uniformity, and room, and so, that's it.
I gotta change my argument.
Now, are you looking to give more testimony?
No.
Mr. Frantoni, you gonna, well, you gonna say anything? No? Okay, good. Now, back to our discussion. I went to look at the property. Mr. Soriano was with me. And I can tell you, if this was a three-family at one time, it isn't anymore. Maybe that's why there was three garages. But it isn't a three-family anymore, and that's the front building. The garage was, never had an apartment over there. Testimony by Mr. Marucci mentioned that even though this is a one-family zone, that there's two families within two hundred feet. But nowhere is there a three-family. And I'm not about to start precedent in approving a third, out of order!
I object to that.
I don't care, you can't object to us. The case is closed. I'm not gonna start and approve a three-family in a one-family zone. It's that simple. So I will be voting no on this application. Anybody else who wants to vote yes, it's up to them. But I will be voting no. Anybody else wanna give their opinions? I assume, I, I, I feel you should all give your opinions. No matter which way the case goes. Mr. Malano?
It's simple for me. It's not allowed in this, in this...
So you agree with me?
I hate the way I'm with you. My point is, again, if we allow this, then there's one more going down the road. And, and, you know, there'll be more and more knee-type cases. Saying, I'm eighty percent there, I'm seventy-five percent there.
Well, 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 I'm gonna tell you something, just a second. One thing that did come out when we went to look at the, at the place. There's a garage, I don't know if it's on both sides or on one side. There may be on both. That are similar things, even with a phony window. Even with a phony window. So, I'm saying to myself, I'm not gonna start a, a trend here where everybody's gonna be coming, well, you approve this one, why don't you approve me? Maybe he owns more, I don't know. I didn't ask that question. But my point is, it's a, like you said, it's a one-family zone.
That's it, I'm done.
And that's it. I'm not gonna make it into a three-family.
That's my opinion, that's all I...
And that's my opinion too. So now we got two opinions. And we agree for one.
No, please.
Please, I know you hate saying that. Everybody, anybody else, please, give your opinions, because you should always have your opinions while you vote one way or the other. Especially if, if it's gonna be a split vote. Mr. Marucci? You're not gonna give your opinion of why you vote one way or the other?
Okay, I agree with what's already been said. We did not want to put a three-family in a one-family zone.
Okay, that's your opinion. Uh, Ms. Bennet?
They're the same way, it's not allowed.
Mr. Soriano?
I'm glad I took the time out to inspect the property. I take my job serious, and, uh, I agree with, uh, with you. I see what you're saying. Uh, it's, the law states that it's a one-family.
I can't hear a word you're saying.
Nobody cares.
The mics work.
I'm sorry?
The mics don't work.
No.
They don't work.
I took the time to inspect the property. And, uh, I see where the, I see where the law lies. There it is, I'm good.
Gina?
All the evidence?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Renaldi, you'll be voting tonight, yes?
I agree with you, if we do it for one, we have to do it for...
Guys, speak up, guys, she came here on the record.
If we do it for one, we have to do it for all, I, I...
I can't, the thing kept record, see, that's not... That's not an accurate argument in terms of we do for one. Every, every application stands on its own, I just wanna put it on the record.
Okay, but does it apply, this is a one-family zone, we don't want to make it into a three-family?
No, no, that, that's...
That's your, your prerogative.
Thank you, okay.
If the town, there's a lot of reference tonight to, uh, the other zones, the RB and RC. If the town wanted to include carriage houses in the RA zones, they would've done that. And I just think that, uh, they left them out for a reason. They left it out in the RA zone for a reason.
Because then it would be a two-family. That's why. Okay.
Make the motion to...
Motion to deny. So a yes is to deny. A no is not to deny.
Correct, make that again.
A yes is to deny, and no is not to deny.
Make the motion, I have a second, that's a question. That's a question.
Soriano made the motion, I need a second.
Second.
Court hold the ball.
Marucci?
Yes.
Catalina?
Yes.
Renaldi?
Yes.
Soriano?
Yes.
Alana?
Yes.
Bennet?
Yes.
Phil Gershia?
Yes.
Application is denied, submitted.
Do I get to say something?
Say what you want.
I thank you for your time and attention, however, to say that it's precedent-setting is incorrect. We had a conversation, either a doctor here or an interested citizen, I'll change that. You told them, that doesn't matter, and then you get up and say, well, this is precedent-setting, we don't want a set of precedent. That's not right, and your attorney made that clear to you.
Then I suggest you file an appeal.
You know the expense of that, I'd love to.